Six thirty, we will call the November sixth Planning Commission meeting to order. First order of business, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, yes, we got roll call, everyone's present. Next item is Roll of the Planning Commission, and is on the agenda. We got approval of agenda, any changes or corrections?
No.
All right, consent agenda. Only item on the consent agenda tonight is meeting minutes from October 2nd. Any corrections or additions needed for that?
Yes. Say that again? Oh, yeah, you missed that.
Oh. Vote for approval.
Motion to approve the agenda.
All right.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Keith and a second from Darren, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes five zero. Consent agenda, Planning Commission meeting minutes from October 2nd.
I'll make a motion to approve, since I was there.
And second.
We have a motion from Paul and a second from Jeff, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes five zero. Item six, open forum, anyone here for open forum?
There you go.
Marcia, come on up.
Marcia Grover, 11320 from Brook Lane, Dayton, Minnesota. I just have a couple of things I want to mention. I'm holding up here picture of a data center. This was on the front page of the business section on Monday's paper, Star Tribune. This is a data center, data centers provide computer power for AI. This was, one was built in Carlisle, Indiana, New Carlisle, Indiana by Amazon. Amazon alone is planning thirty more of these data centers across the United States, as is Google, Meta, and Microsoft, they're also planning these data centers. And they always start out with NDAs, that is, non-disclosure agreements. This means they're secret. Why do they have to keep these plans secret? Part of the answer that I can figure out, I don't know for sure, is because they require massive amounts of infrastructure, water, electricity, to keep the electronics cool, roads, lots, and lots of roads and parking lots. This means enormous amounts of infrastructure to be built. Harrington, Minnesota is going through this process right now. NDAs are used in the business world, but the city of Dayton is not a business. The city of Dayton is supposed to support the residents, not support developers and contractors. I feel the citizens of Dayton would not want to see a data center be built in our city, nor would they like the management of this city to sign NDAs to keep secrets from the residents, who, by the way, pay plenty of taxes to this city. I'm urging you to take a vow that you would not sign NDAs, the Planning Commission, the City Council, and city employees should not be keeping secrets from the citizens of this city. And the second thing I wanted to mention was, you may remember that there's a house in Maple Grove just across the border from Dayton on Fernbrook Lane, and it's all by itself now. Well, I recently heard from the owner of that house about what is happening to them. They have no access to their home. They have to park their cars on a side street out of view from them. They have a driveway, yes, but they can't access it, they cannot put their cars in their garage. The developer has done the landscaping so that the property, that the homeowner's property is higher than all the areas around them. They have no address, they have, they're not getting any mail delivered, they have to go to the post office and pick it up every day. Maple Grove has proposed an easement for their driveway, but it'll be over a thousand feet long. The city will own that property, but the homeowners will be responsible for maintaining it and having it plowed in the winter and mowed in the summer. They only have a shovel and a snow blower, a thousand feet is really quite a distance. They were originally told that Fernbrook Lane would close in September and did not find out that it was moved up to two months until the Friday afternoon before the closure on Monday. The city is proposing that their garbage and mail be tied to an adjacent neighborhood that has an HOA. Yet this family will not be able to join the HOA and will have no vote in the voice in what the HOA says or does to them. This is a prime example of what happens when you have a planning commission and a City Council that is reactive instead of proactive. It's what happens when you let the developers decide where the roads go. It's what happens when you say screw the residents already living there. I'm urging this Planning Commission to be proactive, not reactive. Plan before the development happens, consider the residents who live in the area, don't let the developers make all the decisions. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, moving on, item seven, council updates.
Okay, for the fourteenth, we had our unpaid utilities, which is the water bill, a move to property taxes. Full time, we already combined two part-time openings, and so you got a full-time slot. Went over the sewer and water budgets, all those are in good shape. There was a stormwater project, it involves French Grass and Diamond Lake, they, they're gonna do some study to see if they can improve the water quality. It's $200,000 study, but 130 is covered by a grant. And then we discussed the Stevens Park Master Plan. MSA came back with a plan that added up to a lot of dollars. And so we had a long discussion about that, some of the things we'd like to see done differently. And guess we did talk about it more at the next meeting, which I'll cover. And then there was two closed meetings dealing with the union contracts. Twenty-eighth was our longest meeting I've ever been to, so I think I finished like 12:30 or something like that. It was not pretty, and we were pretty pointy by the end of it. So there was a presentation by somebody who's been in other fire departments, he just discussed the whole, the fire service in general. We had a presentation from Republic Services, mostly regarding recycling and a little bit of organics. The fire department had a five-year plan that they presented, which we sent back for more work, but we did discuss the first year of that plan. It was a full-time firefighter, proposed, we nixed at that. We did talk about hiring part-time firefighters for, during the day when we're thin on volunteers, and that was approved. Talked about medical call response teams that we had had in the past, but they were, they were terminated, and then we brought, we're gonna be bringing them back. Therefore, they're more like a normal call shift you'd see at any other company where people basically sign up for being on call. Then we had the Stevens Park discussion, so we kind of narrowed that down to some sort of restroom facilities that are somewhere between, you know, sewered facilities and the porta-potties. An expansion of the stage area and some sort of roof for it, a water park on the west side, and expanded parking on the west side. We had asked staff to look into the prices for these things. And then there was a discussion about the budget, because our fiscal disparities numbers came back and they were significant, so we had to find another $159,000 to cut the budget. And it looks like that's, that's, we're gonna make that, we have to have a little bit more discussion about it, though. There was two, there's been two tax forfeited properties that we are dealing with, there's one down on Robinson, just to the right, as you go down the hill, so it's basically below the church, and then the nine-acre parcel up by the interchange, and we discussed, so those are gonna go to the EDA to deal with, and then we will probably have to loan the EDA about 300K to get, to buy the interchange one, or, I shouldn't say buy, it's to release it from, I didn't been counting. We talked about, well, we, we, we're gonna have staff talk to the state to see if they will fund a Level One EIS study, just to, it's basically to talk, to look at that river crossing, to see if, you know, it's even feasible, and where it's planned, if it's even feasible. And most of us are very adamant that, you know, if that thing comes in any sooner than 30 years, it's too early. Hundred and thirteen sewer plans, so those plans were approved and it should be going out for bids. And then there was a discussion on another property that Three Rivers wants to buy, and basically the discussion was on the process that they're using. And so we tabled that decision as to let them purchase it. That was it.
Okay, any questions for council?
Mayor, who currently owns that piece of property by the intersection in the Parkway that we were looking?
I never got a straight understanding of that, it's under county control?
This is the tax forfeit?
Yeah.
Like, who owns it currently?
Yeah.
The city has ownership for public use, but if it's not going to be a public use, then it's Hennepin County. So we're buying it from Hennepin County so that we can sell it for private use.
Is there still some thought of a, a new fire house on the southern end of town?
Not there.
Not there?
We've hammered that out quite a bit, yeah. Yeah, not there, it's right on the interchange. And we, we had purchased another property, at least we, we kind of purchased it under, under kind of the guise of, here's where a station could go. I don't think anybody's overly happy about that space, that spot, so we'll just have to keep, I won't say looking, because we kind of have a spot, but, like I said, most people, most, I think most of the people on the council right now don't like that spot. So we will probably keep our eyes open.
From what I hear, most people who live around that area don't like that spot either.
Well, they don't like it at all.
Most people don't like this spot.
Most people don't like it, yeah.
Understandable.
Yeah.
I still contend it's a good thing to have a fire station near you.
Depends on how much you want to pay for it, but, yep.
Yeah. All right, any other discussion? All right, item, moving on to item eight A, public hearing concept plan and PUD for new construction of office building, Greco.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. The application before you tonight is a concept plan review for a commercial office building in the Greco campus that is on the east, west end of town, excuse me. Currently, just historically, they've got two facilities, one for manufacturing and one for warehouse and distribution within that area, and there is a vacant parcel, roughly 27 acres, that is right in between those two facilities. So tonight is just to introduce the project to you, go over some of the high-level understanding related to the zoning ordinance and next steps moving forward, and initial reactions, and looking to provide any feedback to the applicants who are here tonight, as well as one online. So as I mentioned, this property is currently guided industrial and is zoned I-1 light industrial, and was included in that planned unit development that was established once in 2015 and then amended in 2022 when those facilities were constructed. So that is already, the zoning and the, the guidance of the property is already in place for this. This property is also within the current staging plan of the MUSEA area as well. So looking at the concept site plan here, there is a, basically the east section of this property is the one that would be the initial phase, the applicants do show a future phase to the west, likely another warehousing and distribution facility that is on the same current parcel, that would likely be outlawed as part of this plating process for the office space. The footprint of the building is roughly 33,500 square feet, total of three stories, maximum height would be 59 feet, if there were gonna be screening walls on, above the rooftop, if not the maximum, or the height of the building that would be proposed is 50 feet. Access would be shared with the north and the south accesses that are currently there on West French Lake Road for the two other facilities on the site. There are comments already included in engineering and planning letters that were submitted as well to the applicant from city staff related to having both of those accesses established at the time of construction of this initial office building. The parking count on the concept plan is currently 277 spaces, which is short given the rough estimates of the floor area of this building, to meet the zoning code standard of one space per 200 square feet for office. The applicants did provide a calculation as part of the packet that referenced a section of the code that offers flexibility, and that is ultimately related to the amount of employees that they anticipate at the maximum on this site, which, if I'm not mistaken, is 291, which was listed. Likely this would be a PUD flexibility request, staff does recommend that if, staff ultimately recommends that if the Planning Commission feels that that is sufficient parking for this area to move forward with, staff would at least recommend that they meet that number that they provided for an employee count of 291 rather than having the 277. So that would be staff's initial reaction on that, and more detail would come with the following applications, or the subsequent applications. Setbacks and other elements of the site design are undefined currently, as known in the report. The information has been provided to the applicants related to setback requirements, and unless identified as a request for a flexibility for the PUD, the I-1 standards would apply in this regard. So here's just a site, a view of the site looking east, French Lake Road here, the facility has existing stormwater ponding on the property currently. With the preliminary plat application, engineering would review this in regard to whether this storage is enough or adequate for the proposed improvements on the site. And here's a reverse photo that the, the applicants had provided. High-level detail on the architecturals, the information that was provided with the concept plan submittal, staff is confident that this design would meet the I-1 standards of this district. Here's a view of the internal side of the, of the site.
What do you mean by internal?
Internal, meaning the other, the other side here, this side, would be adjacent to West French Lake Road and French Lake.
That's looking west?
This, we are looking west right now on this, essentially, technically, it's probably more southwest than anything.
It's looking from there.
And then this is that internal site looking towards the east. So a couple of considerations that I already mentioned, the 277 stalls, the total count for the requirement on the rough estimate of the floor area is about 428 spaces. The applicants have noted that they don't anticipate, that is beyond the amount of employees that they would anticipate at this site. Think the rough estimate was just shy of 300 employees that would be working within this office facility, so that would be something that we would work with the applicants to address as part of the PUD. The other thing that I want to note as well, and there aren't a whole lot of additional considerations related to this, but just kind of more once-over reviews to make sure that they're compliant, this, a portion of this property is within the Shoreland zoning district, which is determined by the thousand feet, thousand-foot boundary from French Lake's ordinary high water line elevation. So the things that are included in that for the zoning ordinance specifically is the maximum height of a building within the Shoreland District cannot exceed 35 feet. I did reach out to the DNR just to verify that that was not a part of what they require as a minimum standard for Shoreland districts, and that is the case, where the DNR only sets that limitation of 35 feet for residential properties. However, the way that it is written within this, the zoning district that we have established in our code for Shoreland limits all buildings at that height of 35 feet. And in conversation with the DNR, this would be an identified PUD flexibility that the DNR does not have a problem with. I will say that obviously with the preliminary plat application within the Shoreland District, the DNR will have an opportunity to review this and provide any comments and recommendations for that. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that impervious surface maximums within the Shoreland District is limited to 25% impervious surface. That is a standard that is established by the DNR, and the applicants, the staff encourages the applicants to adhere to this to the extent possible, to avoid any considerations regarding variances. From the DNR's perspective, because this is a regulation that they have established for their model ordinance for cities to adopt, this is not eligible for a PUD flexibility, but would otherwise require a variance, if they, if, if it was not met. So the role of the Planning Commission for a concept plan submittal is to discuss, ask any questions that you may have for city staff or the applicants, as I mentioned, they are here tonight. Staff also requests that you hold a public hearing, notice was sent to the surrounding properties within a quarter mile, as well as published within the press a couple of weeks ago. So all comments are advisory-only and non-binding, and no action is being requested at this
Any questions for staff or comments?
When you guys were looking at the parking, did you only look at our code? In the context, I think our code is a little outdated here, too. Most offices I looked at, I took a peek, is four stalls per 1,000, so one per 250, not one per 200. Did you look at that at all?
Other than the initial parking calculations that I did for commercial office space, not for this specific one, now absolutely that there are considerations that we can look into regarding that. From the 200 to 250 square feet, I don't know if the request of 277 would meet that standard as, at this point.
It'd be about a 20 to 25%, so, just taking your 428, that'd take it in a range of 320 to 340, call it, so.
Yep.
Closer to their number compared to our number, which, again, I just looked at a bunch of office projects I worked on, and that was the, not only the city code, but what they usually build.
Sure, and obviously with the floor plans that they would submit with the site plan review, we'd be able to net out those areas of stairwells, those, those areas that are utilized not for office space generally where employees would be. So that would be a consideration that we would include, too. The, the number that I had provided was a very broad generalization of an estimate based on the footprint.
I think the only, the only comment I got, and if you didn't find it in your packet, the page eight shows the shoreline offset related to the building, kind of relate, just future helpful that I have up on the screen, so.
Sure.
Just, it's there in the packet, but, you know, helpful, helpful to see up there, too. Any other questions?
Just technically, I see that 124th, is that a right-of-way, has that been vacated through this property?
That is vacated.
It's already, it's already vacated?
Yeah, and my guess is through the title work, we'll be able to verify that on this property. I think that that was a placeholder previously from a past design that did not move forward.
And then obviously, you know, the considerations here are, also the parking, which we're kind of getting ballpark figures, and I understand that you'll be able to drill that down a lot deeper once we get real numbers to look at. I'm, I'm okay with the flexibility, I mean, you know, the one thing you hate seeing is the safe parking where, you know, a quarter of it's actually being used. I think standards today are a little bit different than they were four years ago, five years ago, where you didn't have, you know, work-from-home situations and things like that, which antiquated ordinance would reflect, you know, needs of, of businesses four, five, six, 10 years ago, instead of what it is today. With that, though, I would still be cautious with how much flexibility we're gonna give, just because of the fact that we don't know what the future use of this building's gonna be, right? So they can anticipate a need for this building based on today's standards, and in 10 years they might need 10, 15% more employees at this facility, and now we, you know, we might come up with a parking problem at that point. So obviously a discussion between staff and, and the developers for, you know, what they, you know, vision the future needs for this, this site to be, especially with a future building there, too, whatever that building might be utilized for, just some considerations to be made on that, in that aspect. The other thing with the Shoreland District, I mean, I agree that, you know, the Shoreland District's there for a reason, it's to protect that waterway. I think the height requirements is more for the aesthetic appeal than the actual, you know, making sure that the, the water's being protected. Obviously, in this area, I don't have any concerns with going to 50 feet, or 59 feet, or wherever it might be, in the Shoreland District, but I do, I would caution variances, obviously there's no PUD flexibility for impervious surface, but I would cautious, caution any kind of variance request that would come forward for impervious surface. Restrictions are, you know, to be alleviated from the, from the code requirements for that purpose. So once you start giving, you know, variances in, in the Shoreland District, you're opening that, that can, right? And so there, there'd need to be a valid reason why they wouldn't be able to build outside or have not as much impervious surface in that Shoreland District. You know, given hard surface coverage, there might be some ways of getting around that, you know, if it's the building footprint itself, though, you might have to adjust where that building's actually located.
Yeah, if you'll indulge me, I'll just, I'll just pull that reference up here, we're So this is currently the rough estimate of the thousand-foot boundary on this property, and this is the subject parcel, and then if I'll go up to the staff report.
There isn't an official Shoreland delineation, is there?
Uh, no.
On the property right now, or there probably should be?
We, we just have the elevation.
We just have the elevation.
High water level.
Yep, and that's a recommendation that was provided in the planning letter related to them doing a delineation of that Shoreland boundary, so we can have a verification of that. Otherwise...
Could you pull that back up?
Yes.
That one right there is the one I was referring to in our packet.
My question is, where did we get, where did we get the information for that line that shows the 1,000-foot offset from the shoreline?
The DNR establishes the ordinary high-water line based on an elevation, and that elevation for French Lake is 904 and 1/2. So that is the number that we utilize, provided by the DNR.
So the line as drawn is approximate?
So if you go to the other image with the 904 that you were previously at, so if I understand this correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you've outlined where the 904 is on French Lake, and then we take 1,000 feet from that and go to the, that's what establishes that 1,000-foot boundary?
It looks like they're measuring it from the shoreline, from the edge of the water. That's not the shore of that lake, that's why I'm asking.
But then...
I mean, there's got to be 400 feet of floating bog on that lake. You asked me how I know that, because I almost fell through it a couple of times when I was a kid, we were duck hunting.
Yeah.
I grew up in that whole area. The water line on that is nowhere's near where the, or what's shown on this map is nowhere's near where the actual water line is in that lake.
Are you saying it's recessed in?
I'm, yes, it's closer to the road. I've seen, I have seen the water of that lake clear up to the base of the shoulder of that road, in a lot of those areas along there. There's a couple of areas that have been filled in from the previous owner doing their sewers and doing stuff that brought that whole level up, but that's nowhere's near where the actual water line is. That's why I'm asking where those, you know, where that information came from.
So with the plat, there would be a survey that defines where 904 and 1/2 feet is, and then 1,000 feet from that distance. So this is the ordinary high-water level, so it's not the floodplain.
And the ordinary high-water level is determined by the DNR, so they do, you know, they'll take a look at the lake as a whole and say, here's where the ordinary, however they define that, what algorithm they want to use, or whatever it might be, they come up with that ordinary high-water mark or line there, establish that at a specific elevation, and then it's easy, and then if that's where it is today, great, if it's not, you know, that's where it's been established. So I don't know if the question would be, when the last time that ordinary high-water mark was delineated? I don't know if that's our need-to-know, or our jurisdiction, or if we want to get into those weeds as much.
I think it's more information for the applicant to be aware of, because whatever they come up with, if it's different than what you show on the map, it could impact their plans.
Right.
Whatever they come up with, that's what everyone's going to be working on.
Correct. And if the DNR says, yep, it's at this 904 and 1/2, then that's what the developer works with, 1,000 feet away from that.
And that's what it is. The DNR has a database on their website that shows what the ordinary high-water line is for each lake within Minnesota, and then it shows you the date, the last time that it was reviewed and verified. So that, to the newest information that the DNR has provided to us, that is the number that is on there. And then just to your point about the ordinary high-water line, that does not, this is not the same line as a 100-year floodplain line or 500-year, where those unordinary situations occur, like you had mentioned, where the water has gone up to the edge of the roadway.
One other question I have for you, Hayden, and the applicant can answer this too when they come forward, but is it your understanding that they intend to subdivide this property such that the office buildings on one parcel, and then what they build to the west is another parcel?
That would be my understanding, and that would actually be a staff recommendation as part of that preliminary plat, is that they would show as part of the preliminary plat both of those lots, where if this was a future development, we would have them outlot the remainder portion of the area. And again, just to distinguish this regarding the shoreline or the Shoreland district, just because a portion of this property is within the Shoreland boundary does not mean that the entire property is subject to the Shoreland boundary. It is only those areas that are within that area. So sometimes it can get a little bit indistinguishable, especially when it comes to the Mississippi River Critical Corridor area, those are different circumstances, so.
So if property falls within that shoreline boundary, and even with the, what's delineated on the map up here, which I clearly understand I don't agree with, if any of that building falls within that area, I mean, that building shouldn't be built there, right?
Well, really, the limitation, as I mentioned before, was the 25% impervious surface totals. If it is only a section of the building that is within that, and the overall footprint of that building and the area that's within the district is less than 25%, that building, a portion of it, could go within that area. But within that district, there are higher expectations for development of sites.
Any other questions for staff at this point?
No questions for staff. Mr. Chair, I do want to point out that I do work for the firm that's doing the design and engineering in this project, and so I'm going to recuse myself for the conversation in any future votes.
Thank you. I appreciate that honesty and transparency.
Yep.
With that, it is a public hearing, so I will open that at 7:06, and I'm assuming applicant, put you guys forward first. Name and address.
Evening, Chair, members of the commission. Nate Pearson with the Tegra Group, I'm the owner's rep to Greco.
Hi, I'm Martin Seacott. I'm the design architect on the project with HGA, we're the design and engineering firm for the project. I think online we have Kirsten Musman, who is our client with Greco, she's the head of facilities with Greco.
Thank you. Any opening comments from you guys before we start drilling?
Thanks for letting us be here again. I was part of both B1 and B2, and then Martin and his firm were part of B1, so we're happy to be back in front.
Yeah, we're excited for the opportunity to be here, and a few items I thought would be helpful to provide some feedback on, that you all were discussing specifically, related to the parking counts, the way, we are still currently working through the overall size of the building based on the program needs, so that is in flux, and I think that was in your packet. So that will be driving a lot of the parking requirement ultimately, but the way that the calculations are being done is that we're actually planning for the future full capacity of the building. So there is already growth planned into the building for a 10-year plan, essentially. So the parking that's being planned day one is for that future full build-out of the building and not the day one.
Can, on the parking note, do you have this overview site plan?
Yes.
Up there? Just, I wanted to point something out, just from, it might solve both my, some of our concerns, well, that one right there. So just my rough math on this, and from a constructability standpoint of just phasing of your site and phasing of things, that last, see how there's that empty slot to the left of the lowest parking that's designated, right there, right above Hayden's cursor, that area?
Yep.
That's hatched out. If you guys were to extend that parking to the west there, seems like it's about 26 more stalls, might fit the current counts of what the building could be, and it also might be more beneficial for you guys to pave that and put that in right away, if that makes sense.
Yep, I appreciate that feedback. We are working through the actual layout of this, and working through how the site will be divided, as you guys were talking about, that this will be split through the plating process for the two sites. There is kind of a natural benefit to the parking day one being more rectilinear, not jogging all that way, so that's one thing that we'll be doing, is kind of stringing the parking out a little bit more. And then also looking at efficiencies of where we can having, you know, double-loaded aisles rather than single-loaded aisles and those kind of things, so. But, you know, those layouts we'll definitely be working through and looking for any efficiencies or cleanliness or yearliness.
Yeah. You know, when you come with the plan forward, too, I think it'd be helpful to see like the proof of parking area, like even if you don't intend to build it right away. In particular, you know, the feedback is, and hopefully you get some more direct feedback from all of us here today on what we expect for our parking ratio, is that, you know, if you still want to stick to something less than, I'm just going to say the one per 200 is what I'm going to advocate for, because that's what I see elsewhere, so you're 320 to 340. So that, I would just like to see proof of parking in your, how you overall plat the property, so, you know, you can meet kind of a ratio like that, and that's just my number, so hopefully other people up here can give you some feedback, too, including staff, because obviously it's not as straightforward as the calculation I just did, so it's not like that straightforward, but I do think our parking at 1 per 200 is excessive. I think it should be closer to 1 per 250.
Okay.
I've seen 1 per 3, for 300, so.
Yeah, I've seen more.
There's plenty of flexibility on the city side of things if we wanted to take a look at that.
Office buildings really vary significantly, office, private office to work station ratios really shift the square footage per person ratio, so Greco does tend to be an organization that has a lot of offices, so you're going to have less people per square foot. So I think that kind of leans into a higher ratio for the parking also.
Yeah, and that's kind of why I want to see proof of parking, is more from my perspective, is that I've also seen a lot of office buildings get gutted and changed with how they use the building, whether that goes up or down, it goes both ways.
Sure.
And obviously, that's not going to happen in the first 10 to 20 years, but hopefully it's here longer.
Okay.
Any other comments on parking over there?
I'll just note for the group that, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, the code does recognize that things are ever-changing when it comes to parking requirements and such for developments, and allows for certain flexibilities based on specific reasoning provided by applicants, as determined by staff in the planning commission and the city council, to the point where the flexibility that would be requested generally may not even need to be a PUD flexibility or a variance request, but because this is already a PUD and we would be amending the planned unit development, essentially just solidifying that as part of the resolution that this was identified. So rather than thinking about it as a variance from the strict 1 per 200, the code does offer that flexibility language to be provided and determined by the officials. So just wanted, just for context.
I guess I want to challenge staff a little bit, no different than apartments, is that, you know, we don't want people, I don't know how many more office buildings we're going to see coming forward, but I don't want to be constantly getting challenged by people like, we're too low, too high, and so I would encourage staff to look at what you guys think the appropriate range is, so we can give them better feedback on our expectations. I think 200's too low, that's like closer to retail.
I think we need to pay a lot of attention to parking, and this is just judging from my experience in looking at other facilities that have somewhat recently been built in Dayton, and finding that those businesses are not having adequate parking, and at times parking on the street around their facility, which I don't think is what we want in the long run, or even in the short run for that matter. So I think I would be a little reluctant to back off too much from what we're requesting.
I'm good, yeah, just for the record, I'm good between 250 and 300. I just want everyone to come to some sort of agreement, because the applicant needs direction for proof of parking. If they choose to build less, I'm probably okay with that, as long as they can show proof of parking.
You're talking one stall per square footage of 250 or 300?
Yeah, and it's bigger, it's more to the calculation than I'm simplifying it, but...
Yep.
In the application we share also, we'll have floor plans that show, you know, the actual counts that are there, and we can also identify the day one anticipated versus the future, so that's really clear for you all. But the building really will have a maximum capacity that our counts will also be including visitor stalls, so we don't anticipate that there would be a large overflow that would occur, because the building will have a maximum capacity that it can handle, so.
Yeah, and that the 1 per 250 or 1 per 3, the 1 per 250, we're getting close, if the 1 per 300, we're already going to be really close to your 277.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Hayden, but we will see a site plan for the future development in the outlot or the backlot, correct? Us as a city, maybe not us as a planning commission, but...
Yeah, I don't expect or anticipate that the site design for that future would be a part of the subsequent application I would come with this specific site plan review, but you would see that as part of a recommendation or approval for development.
And where I'm going with that is, is if we feel, if staff feels that adequate parking's not available in this site as they build it out and develop it, it can be tacked on to that as...
To be clear, though, you guys do intend to subdivide this parcel?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, so that's kind of what's driving this heater, is when they subdivide it, they want to make sure they have enough for their parking, and maybe if the planning commission and staff feel they need more proof of parking, they got to factor that in now, when you subdivide.
And that's where I'm trying to figure out this future parking, in my mind, I'm trying to figure out the future parking versus what's being subdivided, so.
Certainly, yeah, and there are other alternatives as well, especially with a campus development like this regarding shared cross-parking easements that are provided on both properties and such, so.
I think Greco will be fine, I'm just more going to try and future-proof it by making it clean, so, so I mean, nothing ever happens to Greco, it'll be fine.
All right. Anything else on parking? I know there are a couple other major issues. Next, any?
Mr. Chair, it is an open forum right now, it looks like we have someone in the...
We do, but we have the applicant up, so we will, we will call, we will call the next people up after the applicant's up. So thank you for that clarification.
One of the other comments, so the 50 to 59-foot height, I guess you guys are just listening, I guess we're kind of talking now, because if you guys have feedback, it's a good time to give us your feedback, but I'm okay with the height from a perspective, it's kind of breaking up all the industrial buildings, too, as you look across French Lake Road. You know, if this was a big industrial building that was 50, 59 feet across, I'd have a different answer, but it's not, it's a small office building. The one thing I would encourage you guys to be careful with, with the height, is how you choose to light this building. Maybe 20 years from now, it won't be as a big a deal, but when you look across French Lake now, it's already lit up pretty good, and, you know, we are a dark-sky community, try to be, and so I would just encourage Greco and the lighting plan to, you know, not light it up as much at night. There'll be a point in time in the future where it probably can be, when there's more development and people, you know, want to look across the lake and they think it's cool, but I don't, we're not there as a community today.
Staff did a great job explaining the project, is there anything else you'd like us to explain a little bit more of, or are you feeling like you have a good picture of the project?
I'm excited that an office building's coming to Dayton and Greco.
Yeah, and again, I think that the challenge here for you guys potentially will be just managing the Shoreland district, right? For number one, making sure you know exactly where that ordinary high-water mark is, where that 1,000-feet lies in relation to your property, and then where the buildings and all the other improvements are going to actually land in that Shoreland district, because 25% isn't that much.
It's not.
And if you get a good portion of that building in that Shoreland district, it might be exceeding that requirement, and I would be hard-pressed to think that the planning commission, in my estimate, would grant a variance for that. So it's just something that you'd want to look at pretty closely.
And as I mentioned before, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, with the engineering review, they're going to be able to verify whether the existing ponds on-site are necessary or adequate for this development, and in the event that they're not, we expect that the expansion of those stormwater ponds would happen within that Shoreland district, essentially maybe setting that further back, the building back from that Shoreland boundary.
Or parking, yeah.
Or parking, yeah.
We'll have additional information about that, but the, the ponds are, were designed during the B2 or the, the.
The master planning development.
In their master planning development, they were set up for this site. So they, our engineering team, we are confident that they have the capacity for it, but certainly that information will be shared with you to kind of prove it out.
I, I forget where they set up for this portion or the entire?
It's actually for the entire, the entire site, not just, not just this B2 building, but for the future one also.
The future one also, okay. I guess back to the height, the height, you know, we, we've got 50 feet, I've heard 50 feet, I've heard 59 feet, I know we've got other buildings in the shoreline district here. I'm, I'm one who's against the, the higher buildings on that, on that frontage, just from, from visibility and, and what you see across, not, not the heights in general, so lower the better is my opinion. But obviously aesthetics and things like that play into it. What was proposed in here is much better than maybe the warehouse two doors down in that regard. I, I'm also concerned about elevation from the roadway to the building, not just the height of the building. You know, it's one thing to have height from your ground level, but it's, it's elevation from the, I'll call it the road or the lake, and a fixed elevation above that is more my concern than, than it is the actual height of the building, because you can cut, cut some grade and still get that height, or build up grade and get that height. That's what I'm concerned about, so. Maybe it's not super clear what I'm getting at, but.
Well, it's clear to me, I, I agree with you 100%. The, this lake is one of a finite number of lakes that we have in the city, we're not gonna have any more lakes, they're there, and that's all we have left. This lake has been like a game refuge for most of my life. I mean, you can't, you can't run a boat on that lake with a motor on it, so you're out there rowing around, and it's just been like a game refuge. So the fact that, you know, the folks that live on the east side of the lake can look across the lake and see a, you know, a huge structure like that, and obviously lighting is a big issue. I think we need to really pay attention to what we're doing around this lake. I mean, we've, we've taken the co-western side of this lake and turned it into industrial park, I mean, that's there, that's a fact, I mean, that's not gonna change, you know, thankfully you guys moved in there and you brought jobs and, and, you know, some more structure into our, into our city. But I think we still have to keep in mind why that lake is there and why it is like it is, and try to pay attention and not do something that, you know, that we put this close to the lake, you know, with what we're looking at here today, it actually encroaches on that shoreline. I mean, from what I'm looking at and, and what I was given, it looks like at least a third of the building falls, you know, within that shoreline. Now, I don't know how accurate this is.
Within the shoreline district.
Yeah, within the shoreline district, right. Just like I don't know how accurate the actual shoreline is that we're looking on the map up there. I'm just looking, you know, from my perspective, from living here since I was a little kid, playing on that lake, sliding on that lake, strolling on that lake, hunting on that lake, the shoreline doesn't look right to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've never been, you've never on the, on the west side, and barely, rarely on the east side, been able to get anywhere near the water on that lake before you were walking on a sponge floating bog. In fact, there were times when, when it was really windy out and you had a little bit higher water, those islands were all over the lake. It looked like you could hopscotch all across that lake and be on dry land, but it couldn't be farther from the cage, you can't even find the bottom of that lake with a, with a deep pole or with an anchor, it's just, it's goofy type bottom. I just think we have to keep all those things in mind, I mean, the height bothers me, the location, you know, from the lake bothers me.
We'll certainly validate that the lines that we're using are correct, and then, you know, much of the area on the site that falls within the boundary and the images we're looking at are actually the stormwater ponds, which are impervious, or are pervious, they are not impervious. So, you know, we'll definitely work through and make sure that we're below that 25% threshold, but I, I feel like the, the site, there's flexibility with the placement of the building that I think we'll be able to make that 25% work.
Yeah, this is in the center for you guys, but if you need more specific feedback, please ask, because we're kind of, we kind of got some mixed feedback on the height. Again, I'm okay with the higher height, and my perspective is that would I rather see a 35-foot industrial building bought up to the shoreline overlay district or this office building and parking lot? I'd rather see a parking lot and office building bought up to it. I think it's gonna be more aesthetically pleasing, both on the curb and from the, from across the lake. And so, you know, if we were voting on this for a higher height, I mean, granted there's limits, but 50 to 59 feet, I can live with that, I, that wouldn't be my hangup, I'd vote for it.
Yeah, I mean, I agree, so in other words, if that shoreline district line, if the boundary line, essentially all you had to do to get completely out of that boundary line would be to shift that building back 50 feet, you're not gonna tell the difference between a 59, you know, there's not gonna be much of a visual impact with a building at 59 feet being shifted back 50 feet or up 50 feet, you know what I'm saying? So, especially if a view shed across the lake, you wouldn't, it wouldn't look a lot shorter if it was pushed back 50 feet than if it was where you guys are currently located. That's why I don't have an, an issue with the height either, but again, I'll reiterate the fact that the, the impervious surface area would be critical to make sure that you're not exceeding that, and then that would, that would obviously drive where that building's gonna be located ultimately anyway, so.
Regarding the, the view of the, the building from the lake or that kind of view, I, from our perspective, you know, a lot of the interior experience of the building is set up for allowing occupants of the building to enjoy the view of the lake, so I think it's an amenity that we understand and appreciate and Greco is respects, and they, they are, you know, trying to construct the building in the way to, to enjoy that natural amenity. But I think also the experience from the lake, the way the parking is set up is, it actually puts, I think, the more aesthetically pleasing part of the project close to the lake, and the parking's kind of hidden, so all the lighting that's associated with the parking will be hidden, and the building is kind of more of the foreground, so I think that site organization helps with the relationship to the lake.
Yeah, and I, I don't disagree with any of that, what you're saying, I guess where I was going with this is we had a similar conversation as a commission on the application two doors to the south, and there's a 20-foot retaining wall, and then a, and then a 50-foot building on top of that, so it's like, it's a, it's a different, it's a different, when you gotta make that grade work. In your, in your guys' applications, or at least in what's presented to us with the renderings, there's not that, that 20-foot retaining wall, which, you know, in my mind, accounts for building height, as I'm looking at it, right? Here, there's, there's not that, but I just want to be cognizant of, of making sure we're, we're using as much natural, natural Burmese, natural features to make that grade work. If we can go a little shorter, you know, with a, a little bit shorter on the parapets or whatever on top, you know, to Keith's point of making it as, as, you know, visually appealing, the better if it's not serving a true purpose. If it's serving a purpose to make a, a third story like you're proposing, so be it, in my mind.
Just a question for clarity, so on this drawing, the parapet, I'm assuming is, is the line that's on the back of the building?
So in this, in this drawing, the, the skinny, can I go point?
Yeah, yeah.
So this is the, there's actually a roof screen, so that's the element that is the 50 feet.
That's at 59.
The company units, and we're still working on the exact.
Sure.
Exact size of that. A lot of those units with the placement will actually not really even be visible from the road.
Right.
So we're still evaluating that, but this is the footprint of the 50-foot parapet right there.
Perfect.
There's a few little legs that stick out that you're seeing here that are shorter, but that's the, the tall part.
Do you know the height of the front part, like when you're looking from the road? It's not 59 there?
It's not, yes, it's 50 from finish four, so we can share.
So, it's nine feet.
Yeah.
The tall part is, what we did, we did a study to push the units back as far as we can.
Perfect.
And so Martin and his team have done some perspectives, renderings, and like he just said, from the road, hopefully you won't see that, you won't see the high rooftops.
You could see, you could see where that parapet is on the renderings that are in the, in the attachments for the, the report here.
That one.
So you can't see the screen wall at all, so that, the high part that's at the 59 is not visible from the road.
And as you know, with Greco off to the right of this picture, they've done that big gray grass kind of area where they hold their company picnic, and they wanted to make sure that it was green along the road, it wasn't just road and then building, so I mean, we like what, what HGA has done with this landscape design as well. To your point, it's like, I don't want to see this big slope and keep going with the parapets.
And when you screen those mechanicals too, I think it's good to take the perspective from the other side of French Lake too.
So that's what we asked them to do, because in the buildings over at B1, you will actually see the mechanical units, and so it's like, well, we need to screen.
Yeah.
Where you can see.
See, even like, like I said, when you go all the way to the other side, the east side of, of the actual French Lake, because.
Oh, oh.
It's a pretty big opening, like when you're, I don't know if you noticed, but a lot of kids watch the sunset, well, right over the Greco building.
Oh, okay.
That's their hang spot.
We can certainly look at that, the PUD actually does provide flexibility on roof screening, so the PUD actually doesn't require, it has language in there that rooftop mechanical units can be just painted to match the building. So, you know, we are looking at screening from an aesthetic standpoint, but it's not, it's not something we are 100% committed to at this point.
Yeah. My opinion, I'd ask you to commit to that from across the lake.
Well, I think.
As far as the PUD.
I think through the PUD also, if, if there is gonna be any allowance of that building being greater than 35 feet in the shoreline district, then, then we as staff, or excuse me, we as a commissioner, the council, would require that it, it is actually screened instead of, right?
The majority.
We could actually, we could actually say it's a requirement.
Yeah.
It's part of the flexibility, yeah.
And I would ask you to screen it from across the lake. Which shouldn't be too difficult, and it'll look small as you get further away from it, so.
Any other questions, comments for the applicant?
I'm looking forward to it, I hope to see the project go forward. Like, in-office use in this area would be phenomenal to help even potentially drive commercial that people would love to see, and that's one thing we lack, is enough daytime employment to drive commercial. It's not the most convenient place, meaning Rogers might benefit more than us, but it's a start.
Thank you, we may call you back up after.
Sure, understood.
After the open forum, for the public hearing. Marcia.
Just for clarity, quick, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, within the shoreline district, it is a requirement that commercial uses obtain a conditional use permit, so that is where those conditions of approval can be addressed at that point, even if it wasn't to be a planned unit development or anything like that, so there are mechanisms to have those attached to the resolutions of approval.
Thank you.
So, on the parking, I am very definitely against giving in, giving an inch on what is required as the minimum, and that should be it. Last week, my husband and I were driving over to Brockton Lane from our home on Fernbrook, and we decided to take 117th. And we fell in, as we turned on 117th, we fell in behind a curbside garbage truck, and he was turning off of Fernbrook, going down 117th, and we followed him, and we took 121st, where, which runs on the south side of Curbside, and Curbside had employees, I guess they were employees, parking on the road, on both sides of the road, and the garbage truck just barely squeezed through these cars, and we, we, we made it okay, but there was not enough room for two cars to meet and pass each other. So you need adequate parking for these businesses. And the other thing I wanted to mention is that French Lake is part of the Mississippi Flyway, you have migratory birds coming through there all the time, and these birds will be slamming into this building, I mean, there'll be dead birds all over the place. We have a little rambler, and we have birds hitting our pitching window all the time. So you have to start thinking about the Mississippi Flyway too, and these migratory birds, and so whatever the DNR says should be what you follow, you should not be giving variances because this is, this is what they say, and there's a reason why they say it.
Marcia, could, could you please state your name and address?
Oh, Marcia Grover, 10320 Fernbrook Lane, Dayton, Minnesota.
Thank you.
I thought we had them, no.
So our minutes are taken by AI, so it's.
I'm just teasing. I appreciate the input. Is there anyone online?
There is a member of the applicant group online, if you'd like to speak, you're more than welcome to at this point.
I don't know if we can hear. I am not sure why we cannot.
The grumlets continue. Well, Chris, are you, have any reason? Would that, any further discussion up here? Any reason to call the applicant back forward?
No, I just want to reflect some other comments that are being made, that this is, you know, a great thing for, for Dayton. I like, again, the, the office component coming in here and helping offset some of the other uses in the area, so building looks great, could be why one of our planning commission members is on helping with the design of the building potentially, right? So, but no, I, I think it's, it's gonna be a great addition, this is a good first step in understanding what's gonna be required or considered for the, the rest of the proposal here, so I'm looking forward to seeing it come back.
I echo a lot of what Jeff said, and the other thing I just said, I want to leave staff that when they come back, I think it would be very useful for staff to have some feedback about what other communities do, or what other office practices are doing for parking, because I agree that the public needs to be protected with parking, but I also think our code is way too burdensome and not even close to what the market's doing. And, you know, if we have a parking issue at Curbside, I think some, well, I myself, that's one of the reasons I did not approve that when I was the one person that didn't vote for it, because it was gonna be an issue with the way they do their business and all the drivers coming in, and the trucks there, and every time I look at it, there's parked, trucks parked every inch on the ground. Same problem they had in Brooklyn Park, same problem here. Not saying it's a code violation, but that's why there's a parking issue.
Any other comments or feedback?
I can say it better myself.
All right. I, I have no additional comments or feedback. With that, I'm gonna close the public hearing at 7:39, and we don't, we do not take a vote on this one.
Right.
So we'll move on, item 8B.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Hit the home button on the.
There we go. We'll make it.
Now you can talk again.
I can talk again, man.
Was it hard?
It is hard. I mean, I don't say a lot to start with, but, you know, still want to say things.
You can just tomorrow at the office.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can. So, uh, this next item, so we, we have, uh, this, uh, I refer to as a laundering list of potential, uh, city code amendments that we're trying to bring forward to the planning commission as time allows. So, um, this, tonight we have two to talk about, the first one is rounding. So when should a fraction be rounded to a whole number? This, uh, discussion originally started out during a concept plan review for the Bernans property, um, in relation to the A3 district. So specifically density, so in that situation, uh, there's a project that had, um, had to meet two units per twenty density. It, it was less than a twenty acre, I should say, it's a hundred and seventeen and a half acres. Um, trying, the question was, should it be rounded up to a hundred and twenty? We've had a similar discussion, at least at the council level, on animal units, although it's a little bit different than zoning. So, this question still should, remains is, at what point should numbers be rounded to a whole number?
I guess I'll start off the, the, I think you guys, I mean, I, I think it's pretty evident right here as far as, um, whether or not rounding gives an alleviance to the code. In other words, are you, are you allowing for what would otherwise be a variance if you're rounding up to the next unit? So in other words, I'm doing a parking calculation and I come back with, I need a hundred and twenty point eight parking stalls. Well, to meet code, that's a hundred and twenty-nine, because if you went down to one twenty-eight, you're under, you're technically under the required number of parking stalls for that use. Um, in looking at density, well, if the code says you need a hundred and twenty, you know, acres, let's say, and you're only at one seventeen, well, my estimate would be, well, you're short then. You, you'd need that a hundred and twenty to make that hole that the code is looking for as far as those minimum requirements. And so I think the only time you would round up, in my estimate, is when, um, you're not, it, it wouldn't be otherwise taken care of through a variance, right? So, or it's a code requirement to round up. And I would think, you know, most definitions are at the point five mark, right? So anything above, then it's like, well, what's, what's the, what's the, you know, are you talking about tens, you know, hundreds, whatever it is? And I think that it, it depends on the situation, um, but with acres, I think it's per acre, one acre, you know, and rounding up and down. Go ahead.
I was going to say, I mean, I think the, I think the example above that, right there, written up there, you know, we're, we're rounding to point one four. Three point one four, like, we have to round at some point, right?
Of course.
A half an acre is a still a pretty large property.
That's right.
Or a residential property is, is where I'm getting to.
Yep.
Maybe half a duck, when we count animal heads.
Right.
Is, doesn't make sense. So I think there's some logic that needs to be applied here as well.
Well, that's what I was getting at, so if, if you're saying it's one point five ducks, well, you have to go to two, right? So, you know, you, or, or if it's one point five parking stalls that you, that you need on your property. If, if you only provide one, well, you're under, you're not meeting code requirements. So you have to go to two.
Can't have half.
To meet, right, to meet those code requirements. So it, it's the, depending on the situation, and my estimate is when you, you, when you use rounding to round up to the next unit of measurement. But I agree, I mean, rounding a hundred and seventeen and a half acres to a hundred and twenty, that's two and a half acres, that's a lot of land.
Now, now, if we said.
If it was a hundred and eighteen point six.
And that's, that's where you're, that's where I think, right?
Yeah, the example.
I, I think at that point, your code could relay when that occurrence is being, i- if, when that occurrence happens, per code, you would round up to the nearest, you know, unit of measurement, I think, at that point.
You know, you're focused on the acres, but I think considering that this is a ten-acre gannularity, really what you're talking about is, is eleven point seven five lots equal twelve?
Right.
And that's, I think, the question. I mean, to me, that's, that's more along the lines.
I think each instance, I mean, I've been a part of a city that have, has issued variances for a matter of inches, right? So it's like, because you're too close by six inches, well, you, you're not meeting the code because you're two, you're six inches too close. So, you know, what, what level do you say, well, we're close enough?
Right.
Right? And I think that's going to be the determination of the council, um, per whatever they're, they're looking at at that time.
The variance or the potentially introducing fractions being rounded to whole numbers.
Right, and I've seen codes where they actually will reference what happens when there's a fraction. Do you round up or do you round down? That, that's actually some, there's actually code in city codes that would address that.
Well, and where, you know, I, I'm, I'll, I'll say it this way, I'm, I've been thinking about building a shed for a number of years, right? We require a permit over a certain square footage. I don't want to pull, I don't want to pull a permit for the shed.
Make sure it's a hundred and ninety-nine square feet.
Right, right. But I don't want to get in that situation either of, okay, now if someone built a shed at a hundred and ninety-nine square feet, are they two hundred square feet? You know what I'm saying?
A hundred and ninety-nine square feet.
Well, right.
I don't need a permit.
What, help me, help me a little bit with what's actually driving you to ask us this question?
Well.
Is there a specific example?
Yeah, so in the case of the Bernans project, where, you know, it's an issue of do they have eleven houses or twelve houses? And, and that's a difference of tens of thousands of dollars.
For them.
For the applicant, yes.
But then you have to relay that back to the code, and what does a code require? And it, and again, I, I think if rounding gives them an alleviance to the code, that's not, in my opinion, where rounding should occur. I think, I think at that point, they ask for that variance to, hey, I'm two and a half acres short. Can we make it a formal approval that, that two and a half acres is okay in my situation through a variance procedure?
So I'm thinking of, okay, so if they have, uh, okay, just to keep it simple. So let's say there's a requirement that you have one acre and applicant comes in with, you know, zero point nine nine. They still need a variance, if it's zero point nine nine or nine eight, that's maybe close enough if.
I agree with Jeff that it's a variance process because it's just all subjectivity now, what's the.
Yeah.
What's the right degree of rounding?
Unless, unless a code.
I'd rather make the variance the subjectivity instead of trying to write a code and they're like, oh, that hurt us.
I mean, there's a reason you get, you get surveys done on a property, right? And, and like I said, we've, I've processed variances because they were half a foot too short on a lot width type of situation.
Yeah, there's just so many different types of measurements and calculations that are done throughout the code that like, you can't just have one size fits all rounding, right? It has to be kind of a specific kind of thing. But then, um, you know, I think to Mayor's point, like, instead of looking at the acres, you know, they're allowed eleven point seven five properties on the division. Well, they're allowed more than eleven, so does that give them twelve? Right, so I mean.
And I think.
It's kind of like the ducks, you're allowed one point five ducks, so does that.
But then the question is, can you have a point seven five? Could you have a three-quarter of a property? No, no.
I think when it comes to density, that you're, I mean, you get in the density calculations too, a minimum density with our zoning code of, you know, maximum of units per acre.
Yeah.
And then there's a maximum density, it's the same issue you're going on here, that's why I still think it's a variance because, you know, you could take three hundred lots and divide it by, you know, six hundred acres and it's two lots. And, you know, you, you, the numbers could be really big if we wanted.
Yep.
I mean, we have some landlords that are, that could master plan an area and have big numbers.
Yeah.
And now it's like, well, you know, and, you know, at the end of the day, if they have really big numbers and they get one or two extra lots, is that going to make a difference to anybody? Probably not.
Yeah.
And, and then, you know, the other thing is that the city can't control how much land someone owns. As far as saying, I'm coming to the city because I own this amount of land, but I'm just short. Well, that's not the city's fault that you're just short two and a half acres. It's, it's a consideration that you have as a developer because you're not going to get your ten or twenty thousand dollars more for that one lot. But that shouldn't be the city's burden, it, it should be their burden to understand, go through that process, and then ask for the variance for that, and maybe the city complies and says it makes sense.
Yep.
And that's a lot of discussion on density, but on animal units, I can see the rounding up completely.
Yeah, so kind of my, my interpretation where the fraction is, you know, in practical unit, you know, so using the duck, for example, you're not going to have half a duck.
In, in practical units, a duck, parking stalls, um, I'm trying to think what else.
Why wouldn't it be lots though?
I miss exactly.
I mean, because using the same logic.
They would have to come for a variance on the lot.
I understand that, but getting to the one and a half ducks, you can have one duck, you can't have half a duck, but the answer here is, you don't get the other half of the duck. So, that, I mean, I look at it from the standpoint of, you know, it's eleven point seven five lots, and we're saying, the city is, would be effectively saying, we're going to take the point seven five. I'm not going to let you have it.
In theory, you might get more money because its lots are slightly larger too, so he might.
Maybe.
The same, and I'm not saying the city can't do a variance, I just think putting the code around it is going to be.
No, I understand, I understand what you're saying there. Um, would the variance be based on then the financial hardship because it's a.
It's a tough thing.
They'd have to come up with a reason.
Not alone. There's got to be other reasons to say.
I mean, I'll, I'll just stand on the fact that you, you, using rounding can't, can't help whoever's asking for that rounding to occur uh, to get some kind of advantage to the code, of the code. So in your, in, in the mayor's, um, example of one and a half ducks, well, if the code says you can only have one because of the calculations being made and the calculations come out as, well, it says I could have one and a half, well, you're only allowed one. Because giving you two would be above and beyond what the code requires.
I, I think it's tied to where the code requires minimum standards.
Correct.
And maximum standards is where the rounding comes from. And additionally, related to the Bernans project, because it was already brought up, the consideration was related to this whole idea of the A3 district and allowing a density of two per twenty and, uh, setting those standards and getting the blessing from the Metropolitan Council to move forward with this type of development that Dayton wants to see within the city. However, if you allow twelve lots on a hundred and seventeen and a half acres, you are not meeting those guidelines that are established, uh, by the Metropolitan Council who's kind of assisting us with, how can we, how can we do this without getting ourselves in, into an issue with the Met Council in the future? So that, that was another consideration that was related. I know that some might seem arbitrary, but, uh, but it is still, it's still there, so.
No, I was just sparking because they put a monkey wrench into it, which, whatever, that was expected.
Well, I'm, I'm afraid if we, if we start saying fractions could be rounded to whole numbers, we'll see, uh, we'll see a development where they come in at, you know, fractions of, just shy of our setbacks, right?
Right.
And, and well, the code says you can round it up.
It's just going to be a hard thing to manage. I, I see the point, it's just I don't know how you manage it. Because what do you round up? Do you round up the acreage, or do you round up the lots, or the duck?
It might be, have you consulted with a city attorney on this?
No.
That's right, that might be the first place to start if you're really considering this. And I think there might be some potential case law out there that says you can't round up in these situations. Because then, like, like what Chair DeMuth was saying, I mean, people will find a, a way around and the loophole to come in and say, oh, your code says I am able to get these fractions, because of it now they're exceeding the expectations of what the code is really trying to get at.
Sure. Well, and to that point, so Minnesota statute has limitations on how you round up land divisions or land measurement, so that's to the tenth of a foot. So you have one point zero zero or one point zero one, uh, or example, you're not going to have pi. So, you know, three point one four five nine is three point one four.
So it's the direction then, that no rounding is to be had, and if there's a need, they can do a variance and they have to prove hardship beyond a financial desire?
And that sounds good to me, but I mean, I think of.
Say it, but I personally don't want to be up here deciding all these fractional and variance.
Right.
Yeah.
That's, it's a, I don't know, you have to rock and hard places, you feel for both sides of the situation.
Yeah.
So I kind of think you just stick with the code and.
Don't change. I, I think if you're getting to that point, there's a reasonable use or reasonable explanation for the requirement of that variance. And I think we can, as a planning commission and then as a city council, help approve a, a variance if it's reasonable and you're within a certain, you know, couple of square feet or whatever it might be, well, you're close enough type of thing, right? So I, I think through variances, those cases will iron themselves out.
And I know a lot of cities approve a lot of things that don't, with variances, that don't necessarily approve everything that, it's not as difficult as people think, or at least the approval. I mean, Minneapolis does it nonstop.
Well, there's got to be a complaint.
Yeah.
It's good. Yeah.
I'd bill care rounding up a half a duck though. Give him two.
We heard the argument.
Then you just had to change it to two then.
Yeah, exactly.
That's true.
That's what you're doing.
Yeah.
It's how the state.
I want to see the half a duck, that's what I want to see.
It's how the state counts animal heads, if I remember correctly.
You get half and I get half keeps.
Yeah.
We need to take it home.
Do you have enough direction?
But, y- yep, yes.
Are you sure? You're looking at us like you don't.
Well, I'm just waiting for the next project.
Oh.
Item eight C?
Yep.
He's following rules.
Okay, uh, this is in regards to site plan. So what is the threshold where a site plan maybe should be required by the planning commission city council? Uh, the origin of this, um, topic was from the Spaniard Site Plan. So this is a, a project a few months ago, I can't remember what month it was, but not too long ago, up of one hundred thirteenth Avenue. Um, this was a, I want to say twenty-six hundred square foot building with a proposed seven hundred square foot addition. Um, the question kind of became, uh, is this addition so small that we don't even need to see it? You know, if it meets all the, the requirements of the city code, does it need to have a separate, by the planning commission city council? In looking at a few cities, it, it kind of goes different ways. In our code, it does, uh, any project or any new development, development not, or, uh, construction other than single family or, uh, two-family homes, has to be reviewed by the planning commission city council. The only exception is if you approve a project, I'm going to use Graco as an example because it's fresh. Let's say if you approve a site plan for Graco and they come back within five years to do a building addition and they, and it, using the same building materials, it meets all the codes, that can be approved administratively.
Regardless of the size of that addition?
Uh, no, that is, uh, I think it's.
Is it ten percent?
Ten percent, yeah. If it's six years, it, it starts the process over, it, it has to be reviewed. So looking at this Spaniard project, it was only a seven hundred square foot addition, but that was thirty percent of the building. So even though that was a small addition, it would have to be reviewed by the planning commission city council. I guess my question is really, is there a minimum size where it doesn't have to be? You know, like, say if it's, um, a thousand feet or, or a thousand square feet or smaller, as one example.
Yeah, I think the question is just based on preference and discretion of what, what the planning commission wants and ultimately what the city council wants, right? So, um, you guys have done your homework, you know that other communities have different variants, varying degrees of scrutiny that they, that the council wants to see or have the city have over these projects. Ten percent is, I don't know if that's average, but.
You got a three hundred thousand square foot Graco building, it's not small.
Right. Um, New Hope has a twenty-five percent, right? So there's varying degrees of what size. So there's varying degrees of what size of an addition triggers the need for it. I think some of the other things to consider is if you have design standards for areas in the city that buildings fall in and they want to change the facade or the look of their building that, you know, currently has a design standard or met design standards before, well, you certainly go on a site plan review for that, right, to make sure that they're they're consistent with with those types of standards. So I'm I'm okay with the way that the code is currently written. I could see it going up to twenty five percent. I mean, it's really determinant on what kind of overview we as as a planning commission really want and ultimately what the city council wants, you know, how much discretion the city council wants a planning commission to have.
This code is regulating all building types, single family, commercial.
Not single family. Not single family.
So we're just talking commercial here?
No.
Commercial, industrial.
Yeah. Apartments.
Apartments, yeah. I call that commercial.
Larger buildings.
That's more the commercial world.
You know, I I think from the standpoint of where we're at as a city, I think leaving it as is is the right thing to do. We've got, you know, I'll give the example of Hutner came in a few years ago with their addition. You know, an older building, twenty seven years old at that point, I believe, you know, a chance to review it, a chance to freshen it up, freshen up that area with with the site plan, right? Or or anything coming in, right? We're 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 not seeing, I don't feel like we're seeing an excessive amount where we need to increase the number.
I I agree, especially with Dayton being a developing city, right? I mean, there is a need for for oversight.
Yeah, and even with the Spaniard property, I think it was good that we saw that one because there's so much going on in that area.
Sure.
Yep.
Plus, it spurns other discussions that we might not know we needed to have because of potential issues that 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 property might have come into that, you know, now we're considering other aspects of the code or whatever it might be. So I I think the discretion's good to have.
So no change?
Would it make any sense to have a total even at if it's like five or ten thousand square feet, like anything over that? Because, I mean, a lot of these bigger buildings are kind of landlocked already. They've kind of maxed out their property, but like, what if the cubes came in and they wanted a nine percent increase and that's, you know, ninety thousand square foot addition or something, right? Like, and then we don't get to see it because it was within five years and they're adding ninety thousand square feet, right? Like, I don't think we've got too many instances where this could happen, but maybe you say anything more than ten thousand square feet, it also has to be reviewed even if it's within five years. Just put a cap on it that's pretty high that it's still not going to, a lot of things will fall under it, but if there is that one off thing that.
I think what Paul just said makes a lot of sense.
Do you do you flip it instead of ten percent of the total area? Do you say a thousand square feet? I mean.
I think the ten percent's good because there's also a lot of, like the Spaniard property, there's a lot of small industrial properties and and then now Paul's just putting in, it's all right, we've got these newer industrial properties, particular ones in PUDs and stuff like that, too, that if they were to want to change them and it exceeded them out, like site access and circulation, all that kind of stuff could factor in.
Does the Dayton code take into consideration site plan review for additions that take up required parking?
Well, that wouldn't meet the code, so that like that would.
What I'm saying is if if a building's already overparked.
Right.
Property's already overparked, but there's a change in the need. So I know that some codes take the parking into consideration also as far as if there's a change in the amount of parking and it triggers a site plan review as well, just to make sure everything else is meets standards. So in other words, an addition could take up parking, it could take up landscaping, it could take up enough aspects of that property where it should come back to the planning commission just to make sure. But again, it's based on percentage, right? So I do want to give staff credit because I think you guys know what you're doing and that you could look at a plan and say, yes, it meets X, Y, and Z of all our codes and we're good. So what is the need for us as a planning commission to look at it if it's, you know, meets those threshold requirements? But again, something over ten thousand square feet might be big enough where we do want to see it, so probably not a bad idea to cap it.
So if, well, yeah, so we have to define a threshold. So if it's going to be a, you know, a certain square footage of whether it's a site addition or a building, you know, site improvement or a building addition, what is that number?
Most of what we do is pretty arbitrary, but I'd say like ten thousand square feet and just make it a little bit higher.
It's an increase of ten percent or.
Ten thousand square feet.
Ten thousand square feet.
What would that do to the project you talked about on one hundred thirteen? If they said if they wanted to put nine thousand nine hundred and ninety nine square feet.
So Spaniard was a thirty percent addition, a building addition.
It's not already.
A lot of those buildings are pretty smaller there.
So it triggers that.
It would require a site plan.
Because of that.
Yeah.
I feel like ten thousand is really high, but.
And if it wasn't, if it wasn't, if it didn't trigger that, if their building was bigger, if it didn't trigger that.
A big building from just doing something.
Ten thousand square feet is a huge, a huge addition, right?
Or less.
Yeah, and that's where.
I'm not comfortable with that at all.
Can you repeat what you're not comfortable with?
Well, I don't I don't think we should give so much leeway to somebody making an expansion without us having looked at it because of all of these things that we've been talking about. That makes me real uncomfortable because I think something's going to pop up and blow up in our face and we're going to go, how the heck did that happen? Well, because we gave them permission to do that because we changed the code. I think we need to pay attention to what's going on in the city. I think we need to look at those things.
So the question you have to ask, though, is what is what is the reason or rationale for a site plan review, right? So if there is no other requirement, there is no variance requirement, there is no conditional use permit, PUD, anything of that nature is simply a site plan review. It's for the planning commission to make sure that it meets all the minimum code requirements and potentially for a public hearing or some get notice out to whoever might need notice for whatever is being built or, you know, an addition onto. So the bottom line is that the site plan review really is just an oversight to make sure that it does meet all code requirements, which staff could certainly do on their own. I mean, that's, you look at the code, you look at the plan, and you make sure that that everything is is, you know, lining up the way it's supposed to be. So that's where the that percentage comes in and says, okay, at what point is it too much of an addition where we want to make sure that there's at least a public hearing, not maybe not a public hearing, but a public meeting to discuss this so other people could understand what's going on, right? So in other words, if they are putting on a huge addition, but they're still meeting all the code requirements, doesn't need a variance or conditional use permit, there there has to be at some point where the planning commission doesn't need to get involved with that.
Right, but if you make that aspect so huge so they could make that big of a change to that structure, then that happens without any input from the city at all.
No, you're going to have you're going to have input from the city.
From the staff.
And that's where that's where the rubber hits the road is the staff. We're just a discretionary panel.
Right, but they're asking for guidelines, though, and how to.
They have your guidelines through the zoning code.
If Spaniard wanted to add on like a garage stall of, you know, five hundred square feet, thousand square feet or something, is that something that the planning commission cares about?
No. No. The garage stall.
So so.
Keith, just to clarify on your too much, are you saying that you want the ten percent lower or the ten thousand square feet lower? Because we kind of need to have some numbers in there. I mean, we don't have to have, we don't want to see everything, do we?
No, I think I'm comfortable with a ten percent. But the other number we're throwing around here was way higher than that.
No, no, it was it was it was ten percent or a certain square footage.
Whichever is less.
Whichever is less.
Yeah, whichever is less.
So in the case of Graco, where Paul is going is Graco could put on a nine thousand square foot addition and still be under that ten percent. So what's that? What's that whatever is less number? I'm leaning towards somewhere around five thousand square feet.
Yeah, the first the first Graco building is a four hundred thousand square feet. So they could do under this, a forty thousand square foot addition without it coming through to us.
Not the way it's currently written. So this is only if you go through the site plan review process and give approval. So within five years of that site plan review approval, they would be able to expand up to ten percent. But if that lapses like the Graco site has, at that point, they would have to come back for a site plan review.
Regardless of the size of the addition.
Correct, yep. So it it's basically within that first five years of the site plan review where they'd have the ability to go ten percent above and beyond what was previously approved.
Yeah. Okay, the second Graco building, that's within five years.
Yeah.
That could get expanded.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's, yeah. So, yeah, just trying to add just one more catch to make sure these big buildings can't add big without us seeing it. That's where like the five thousand, ten thousand number comes in because five thousand square feet on a three hundred thousand square foot building is small.
It's pretty small.
Right, so it's trying to find the ratio there, but.
So right right now, I'm hearing ten percent or five thousand square feet, whichever is less.
And that'd still be within that first five years.
Within the five.
Within five years.
Yeah, anything over five years, it comes to us.
Is there any discussion then, if it is over the five years, how much of an addition we we really need to see? In other words, do we really need to see that one extra garage stall on a building?
I I think we cross that bridge when we get there.
Yeah.
Well, it has to be in the code. That bridge could be. If it's outside of five years, it has to come in front of us regardless.
And I I think it, I think that's where the logic makes sense. You know, what I was saying earlier is we're a developing city and uses are changing, not only with buildings, but how we envision different areas in the city.
And not to mention, our code is.
Yeah.
Still evolving.
But the other thing is that you're going to put a developer through all, have them jump through all those hoops and spend the time, money drawing up plans, waiting on getting bids, all that stuff, just to get to a once a month meeting on a thousand square foot addition that they want to put on their building that's not going to have any impact to any of any of the city requirements.
It might have, I think on a quick trip as an example, let's just say we didn't approve their attached, do we approve their attached garage eventually? Yeah, let's just say we didn't approve their attached garage. They put their building up and and everything about the garage meets the setback's requirements and we approve it, they come back and just add it on because they can because of our code. I mean, that's an example, too, where, you know, people could do that.
But it the the use would still have to meet the code standards, too.
Yeah.
Yes, but that would be a site plan review for the.
Right, then it would be a site plan review if they came back in. Yep.
I mean, that's why, I mean, I know that there are communities that just have that whatever the percentage is, it doesn't matter when.
There's no sound set.
There's no timeframe. So there so maybe ten percent is too, I mean, maybe you say five percent addition, you don't need at any point, whatever it might be. So I'm just saying, there could be some blowback to the city saying, you're going to tell me I have to sit through, I have to wait another month before I even get to the planning commission and see if I could do something that meets code requirements.
That may be something, maybe it's something to, as you, if you're, if we're going to refine this, maybe it's something we take to the EDA and have them take a look at. I mean, they're the ones who are dealing with this the most as business owners and, you know.
You could, I mean, I think they're, I'm pretty confident their answers can be like, increase it, so go there.
I I understand, but it'd be good to have that feedback of like, how realistic is this, too? I mean, how much of a burden is it?
That that was the comment by the EDA when we we inform them with development applications every month that they have, just to let them know what's coming down the line. And we did briefly discuss the Spaniard project and the consensus at the dais was, we don't understand why this is going to the planning commission or city council for. They essentially summed it up as a red tape situation. So that that was their that was their comments. And if you call on that property, there's a lot of discussion on what the front yard was going to be. I mean, that's a classic example that that's the kind of stuff we need to talk about.
Well, that's.
Especially if we need to refine our code.
Yeah, I mean, if there's design standards and things like that, that, you know, an addition, no matter what size, is going to vastly impact the look or the curb appeal or whatever it is. I mean, I think there's some discretion at that point, too, but, I mean, the other thing to consider is that, you know, we as a city don't want to be looked at as a hard place to do business with, right? If we're trying to attract new business or attract new commercial and they they know that they have to, I mean, the new ones are going to have to come to us anyway, but, you know, the current current users here, if they need to go through these steps every single time, they want to, you know, make an improvement.
But business users sometimes only look out for their interest very often.
Hence why I suggested maybe the EDA draft this as.
And not saying that that's wrong because they should be.
No, no, of course. I think so, too.
They're motivated for their interest and that's why sometimes you need to make sure it meets the city's interest.
No, I I agree, but I think there's also a threshold where the the city council could rely on staff, who is the ones who are trained and employed to do this thing, to make that, you know, do their analysis and say, yes, this is meeting everything that we're intending and the city's intending it to meet.
Which we would heavily rely on anyways.
Is there a consensus? So I think what we could do is draft an ordinance amendment and, you know, based on kind of what staff, wherever staff's recommendation is going to be and just let the commission react to it.
How do you envision that reading?
I guess my recommendation would be to get rid of the five year period and then probably the ten percent or a thousand square feet, whatever's less, so that you're you're not going to review a one car garage.
Now, we keep talking about one car garage, but we're talking commercial buildings. I don't I don't ever think that's a realistic.
I mean, I look at, I look at, we talked about curbside, right? Curbside adding another transfer bay, right? That's a realistic thing they could do. How much is that square footage? Is that something we'd want to see, right? That's something that has come in. So that's that's where I'm at with this. Marcia, when this comes through as an ordinance, we'll have a public hearing on it. Sorry, sorry, I don't want to waste. Understood. And and that is, that is where I'm struggling with this, too, is like we've had, we have very much, you know, we come in, we see a size of a building, we see a square footage, we approve it for what it's there, what's next to it, how it's interacting with the neighborhood around it. I'd like to see additions come through is my my opinion, but.
I would, too, and my opinion's largely driven because we keep identifying holes in our code that need updating, and that's what you guys are basing your approvals on is our code. And we keep identifying them, like the office parking. I mean, that's just, it's like a retail ratio. But maybe that would be to our advantage and hurt the app, I shouldn't say to our advantage, it would hurt the applicant, but there could be some things in our code that are complete opposite, that like, oh, my God, we didn't know that was in our code.
And and I understand the concern of the EDA or or business owners trying to do something and I would, I would advocate that I I think there's ways to exploit this. You know, if there's there's a a business in the the area that would like to do an addition or something like we've.
The other thing to consider is if 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 there was a a development that was approved under a PUD or a conditional use permit and they want to expand, I think they need to come back regardless of the size of that expansion.
It would absolutely be required, was just what I was going to bring up, is that the transfer station was approved approved under a conditional use permit. Any expansion of that use would require an amendment to that conditional use permit, triggering the need to come to planning commission and city council.
If it's a permitted use and it's all it was built as a permitted use and only come through the council as a as a as a site plan review, then I think this this would be a little bit more appropriate, putting that ten percent or whatever that percentage is without the the years on it.
And maybe maybe where I'm going with this and Dennis, maybe something to consider with this ordinance is, you know, we're, right now, we're an advisory committee. Maybe this is the chance to to give us a little more power in some of these aspects. So from a developer's aspect, we don't have to go through council, but it can just come through here.
Oh, I see.
Just for site plan review.
For site plan reviews.
Is is that the authority right now? I know there's other communities that site plans just get approved through the planning commission.
Goes through the council.
Yeah, so that may be something to consider as like.
Generally, the site plans are attached to conditional use permits. Generally, site plans are attached to the conditional use permits.
You're just adding a little bit. So you'd have this administrative approval, you'd have this planning commission approval, and then you'd have the full council approval. This is kind of what you're getting at, right?
No, no, get rid of the council approval. Just have them come through us.
On all of them?
Just no...
Just on additions.
On additions.
Oh, I see.
That meet this, just to get rid of some of that red tape that...
I'd probably be fine with that.
That maybe the EDA is concerned about, you know.
I disagree with the EDA. There are some times where, so we'll, yeah, just that step pushes that out a month. But I don't know what, what mechanism we'd have to, how we'd do that. But I'd be, I personally would be fine with that.
Yeah, something to consider as we look at this.
So would we be advising the staff then at that point to then allow them to do the final approval?
We're approving.
Staff would essentially do the review.
We're approving staff's recommendation or...
Yeah. Doing a once-over of, yep, everything meets the code and we're comfortable moving forward with staff's review of the plans. I've seen it in communities that I've worked in previously where even for variances, the planning commission is the approval and denial.
Yep.
And if they deny, the city council is the board of appeals at that point.
Yeah, I kind of like that. But, yeah, no, I can see, I can see, like I said, I personally think that's a good idea for this.
But that's a, that's a different issue than you're looking for...
Yeah.
Advice from us here tonight, right?
Well...
It's a whole other...
It's snowball a little bit. Yeah, we snowball a little, you know.
So back to site plan review. Is there any consensus on the, you know, or seems to me that there's an agreement on 10%. Is there an agreement on putting in a minimum size where you don't want to see it?
I'd say 10%, 5,000 square feet and no sunset.
You said no sunset?
Yeah.
Get rid of the five-year?
Yeah, I'm not comfortable with that at all.
I prefer 10% five-year with, 10% 5,000 with the five-year sunset.
So that, just to clarify, that would mean that the original approval for a site plan would still come to the planning commission and city council with that language? The sunset is the sunset after the original site plan approval. So if anything changes beyond that, but what I'm, essentially, the Spaniard project would still fall under this threshold, they have to come?
Correct.
Okay.
And is the five-year thing, just in case standards and...
I just, I'm more on what Peter's comments, that we're a growing, evolving city with understanding our code, that, you know what, maybe three years from now, five years from now, we could completely make sense to remove the sunset. But I just feel like everything's evolving and changing, that I'd prefer to have a sunset, I don't know. Keith, what are you comfortable with?
Yes, what you just said.
I can support that.
I'm not comfortable with that.
I just, I think, I think the sunset personally doesn't make sense to me. You know, again, if you're permitted use and you come in and you're still meeting, you're, you're under that 10% and you're meeting all the requirements of the code, and you, it's not a conditional use permit, it's not a variance, it's not a PUD, I think at that point, the staff could do a pretty good job of making sure that it's, it's meeting code requirements and issuing permits and things of that nature. Especially because then at that point, it's, any size of an addition would need that, that site plan review. I just don't think that, that's, I just don't think that's beneficial for anybody involved as far as us essentially saying, staff, you did a good job, yep, it meets all our code requirements, it's a permitted use, good job, right? Unless there's other determining factors like making sure that there's, you know, design guidelines or anything like that associated with it. I, I just think that it's too much red tape, essentially.
I do understand 100% where you're coming from. I guess my hangup is that little things just keep popping up in the code. And, you know, if staff were to do that, I guess, just understanding what you approved, so we understand, you know, what were the code issues and identify like, oh, you know, from our experiences, that makes sense, not makes sense. That's why I guess I still prefer the sunset, but...
I think we have at least a three-vote majority, so we'll, we'll have a small amendment for this. Thank you.
Got all you need to announce?
Yes.
Head of 9A, notices and announcements.
Notices and announcements. Okay. Ladies Night Out is this Saturday, November 8th, 4:00 to 6:00 PM at the Activity Center. And I'll try to go through these kind of quick. Dayton Play Place again is every Tuesday at 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM at the Activity Center. We have Deal, Dice, and Domino's on the second and fourth Wednesday afternoon between 1:00 and 3:00 PM, also at the Activity Center. The third Wednesdays of the month, we have a social worker that's available for consulting anyone in the public. So again, this is Thursdays, Wednesdays of the month, 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM. We have a social worker that's embedded with the police department, but is also available to, to talk to anyone. Elevate Hennepin. So Elevate Hennepin is a program that's trying to promote small businesses in Hennepin County. There, we will be, the city will be hosting Thriving Thursdays, Thriving Thursday on November 18th, 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM at City Hall. So this is where small businesses can come here and talk to consultants about any number of certain topics. So this is a good resource that, we have a small handful of businesses that have used, but it really needs more publicity.
Could I put in a shameful plug, that shameless plug, I guess, that the city of New Hope is actually also hosting an event on the 20th of November from 1:00 to 2, or 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. So, it is a Hennepin, Elevate Hennepin, so it's Hennepin County. So, I mean, if Dayton business does not, is not able to attend that one, then obviously City of New Hope is also hosting a Thriving Thursday event.
And, and these, these occur, you know, every month throughout the counties. And it's not just open to, you know, a business that's in Dayton.
Must not be the 18th if it's a Thursday, or 20th.
Mayor for Dayton. So Dennis, if you'd like to give that up for a day, this is open for fourth grade and, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade graders who can write an essay for what would you do if you were mayor for the day. This is being response, or sponsored by the League of Minnesota Cities.
John, would you be able to just clarify what Jeff had mentioned, that Thursday, November 20th or Tuesday, November 18th?
Yeah. Do I get those mixed up?
There, it's, it's that Thursday, November 18th, but November 18th is a Tuesday.
Well, it's, it's a thriving Thursday, so is that supposed to be the 13th?
20th, I'm guessing.
November.
Or is it November 20? Maybe there's some clarification that needs to be, I know that New Hope is, is hosting those on the 20th, which is a Thursday. The 18th is a Tuesday, so it's probably either the 13th or the 20th that Dayton's also hosting.
Yeah. I'll confirm it.
Okay.
We, we do have that on our social media feed, so I'll correct it. Okay. But again, Mayor for the Day, December 12th is the deadline for anyone that would like to submit a, a what would you do question. You can also register for the Dayton Holiday Lights Tour. So the, you can register online at, at this, yeah, I don't have a link for this, but you can email theactivitycenter@datanm.gov. The lights would, would be, the commitment is that lights are turned on between December 1st and December 31st. And registration deadline is November 24th. You know, I've tried to look at, through, tried to find this on the website, I wasn't able to, but I could find it on Google. So, because I, I don't know who owns this light show, but I think they're sitting...
Probably get you a better picture.
Okay. News from the EDA, the, in January, the EDA had bought property in the old village. This will be marketed for sale in the near future. That's the picture here, but that's not the message here. The EDA does have vacancies. Anyone can apply who is either a Dayton resident or a Dayton business that has experience with business topics. The deadline for this is Monday, December 1st. And the EDA meets on the third, Tuesdays at 7:30 AM. So I want to be clear, it's AM, not PM. Holiday Dayton will be Thursday, December 4th, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at City Hall. So as the commission may remember, is we've, we are moving our meeting from December 4th, Thursday, December 4th to Wednesday, December 3rd, to accommodate Holiday Dayton. So, this has been, this will be our third year. It's been a huge success. It's, you know, far more people I've attended than, than I think anyone in this lot, no matter what the temperature is. And then again, our next meeting, to be clear, is Wednesday, December 3rd at 6:30.
Anything else?
Yes, just I did clarify on the Elevate Hennepin's website that Thriving Thursday here in Dayton will be 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM on December 18th, Thursday, December 18th.
That makes a difference.
Was there any consensus on the January meeting, what's going to happen yet?
I guess my thought would be at the December 3rd meeting of, of looking at the calendars for 2026.
So it's not going to be January 1st?
There are conflicts in both January and July.
Good.
We'll know a, a schedule of the planning commission meeting in January by that December meeting in terms of applications submitted or anything like that. The benefit is, is I believe that there is five Thursdays within January, so it doesn't set back our timelines for review and things like that if it were to be pushed to January 8th. So just initial reaction.
I will not be here the December 3rd meeting, so...
It's good for me. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
We have a motion to adjourn and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nobody said, nobody said they can be here on the eve.
Oh, I'm good.
Not yet.